2:00 AM, I called to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, we will have our invocation led by Reverend Enos Gaddis Jr., Associate Pastor of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Zion City, Birmingham, Alabama, and Councilor Joss Vassal will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand and join us. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for the grace of this day, Father. West Our Father, you have blessed our mayor, every member of the city council with wisdom and understanding, Father. Thank you for every first responder, all the city employees, Father, and every neighborhood that is represented here, Father. Teach us to love as you have loved us, Father. Bless our city, our state, and our country with your protection. It's my prayer in the Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with lifting justice, Father.
Thank you very much Reverend Gaddis for that very thoughtful prayer. Thank you, Councilor Vassal, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. If you'll call the roll.
Good morning. Okay. Councilmember Gunn. Councilmember O'Quinn. Good morning. Councilmember Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Vassal. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Protem T. Good morning. Council President Alexander.
Good morning, President. At this time, councilors, the minutes are not ready for July 20th through November 25th, 2025. At this time, we have communications from the mayor. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, Madam Protem. Morning, members of the council, members of the public, all those under the sound of my voice. Very brief mayor's report today on Mayor Woodfin's behalf. Certainly want to invite everybody to this year's Holiday Block Party. Families across Birmingham are invited to join us this Sunday, December the 7th, to kick off the holiday season with our annual Holiday Block Party and tree lighting ceremony. There will be food, trucks, music, face painting, a candy lane, and more. Bring your lawn chairs and enjoy an evening of festive fun and community cheer. This free event starts at 4:00 PM. The tree lighting is at 5:30 PM. Mayor Woodfin hopes to see everyone there. Madam President, Madam Protem, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Well, thank you very much, Chief. At this time, before we entertain the consent agenda, I'd like to ask for during announcements of boards and agencies explorations in January 2026.
Uh, we didn't have any. We didn't have any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd please like to read the Statement of Conduct of Business for the council before we entertain the consent agenda. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the items numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation that are indicated with a capital P will be read, and all public hearings, PH, will be announced. Mr. Clerk, if you could give us the items that are being considered for consent?
Yes, ma'am. Today, consent agenda starts on page two with items two and three. Page three, we have items four, five, and six on consent. Page four, we have items seven, eight, and nine. Page five, we have items 10, 11, and 12. Page six, we have items 13, 14, and 15. Page seven, we have items 16, 17, and 18. Page eight, we have items 19 and 20. Page nine, we have items 23 and 24. Page 10, we have items 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. Page 11, we have items 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Page 12, we have items 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42. Page 13, we have items 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48. Page 14, items 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, and 54. Page 15, items 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, and 60. Page 16, items 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, and 66. Page 17, items 67, 68, 69, 70, and 71, and we conclude with items 72 and 73.
Thank you very much. Councilors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from the consent agenda? Councilor Smithman?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to take item 23 off consent on page nine.
All right, that's item 23 on page nine. Any other items? All right, councilors, we'll entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay. That was Councilor Smith. And who was the second? I'm sorry.
Steven Smith.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Recording voting should start now. Hold on a second here. All right. Should be open now?
Yes.
Councilmember Vassal. Thanks, sir. And Councilmember Woods, got you. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Those items are approved for consent. If anyone was here for an item that was listed as consent, those items have been approved. We will continue with the agenda. Before we call up the first item, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to ask if we could have a unanimous consent to allow for a special presentation. It's okay at this time. We have a special presentation by Councilor Sonia Smith of District Eight, and she's announcing something, some very great news, the grand opening of a healthy grocery section. Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, yes, good morning. Go down below.
Good morning, everyone. Excited to have Ms. Jackie Fasikas Varner here with us today from Bama Health Foods, and she's going to announce an exciting opportunity taking place, kicking off this Saturday.
Great. Thank you all. We are excited as Bama Health Foods. I was reflecting about seven years ago, I stood in front of you all and said that we were going to continue to keep a health food store open for the community that was about to close. So, seven years later, through all the trials and tribulations on the west side, we are excited to announce that we are opening an urban micro grocer that is designed for convenience to make it easy for people to eat healthy in their neighborhood. Nourish Grocer is a concept that we want to encourage all of you to come and experience. Nourish Grocer only will carry things that are healthy, and we will carry local, clean, and we say foods that nourish. We also are an immersive experience as a small micro grocer, educating our customers on things that are good for them or behaviors that need to help improve their chronic illness. And so, it is with very much great purpose that we are excited to offer all of these clean and nutritious foods, grab-and-go foods, fresh produce, local, and even more. So, we're kicking off the grand opening this Saturday with 25 health and wellness boxes, first come, first served, 10 o'clock through six, or through 5 o'clock. And then throughout the week, we will have other activities throughout the store. So, I just welcome you to come and spread the word. I'm not asking anything other than we need the word out so that we can continue to nourish our lives and be healthier together across the Birmingham area. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is very good. I want to thank you. Of course, I do remember when you first came and you sort of gave new life to Bama Foods and the business that you have there, and the investment in the western side. We're always very excited to see bringing nourishing good food opportunities for our residents. So, I really want to thank you. Thank you, Councilor Smith, for making us aware of this, and we wish you may, good luck on Saturday. Thank you so much, Jackie.
And just to say, the address, 1965?
1923.
1923 Westmore Road.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, this time, Mr. Clerk, we'll go back to our agenda. Thank you.
See, item one. I'm sorry. In ordinance to amend zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2025-10, to change zoning district boundaries of QMUD and QD4 density residential district to QD5, qualified multiple dwelling district filed by Northside Development LLC. Property owner, Brian Wolf, CR Endeavors, applicant in order to allow for a new rental development that will have townhomes, duplexes, and or cottages for properties generally located around the former Caraway Hospital campus, bounded by Caraway Boulevard to the east, 25th Street north to the west, 20th Avenue north to the north, and situated in section 36, quarter section 4, township 8, 16 range to west Birmingham, 35235, and here in Washington Heights. Motion, please.
Move the order.
All right, thank you. I'll turn this over to Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you. Madam President, so the developers here, Mr. Wolf, would you care to come and tell us about the project? I'm sorry, excuse me. Kim Spurrel from staff is here to tell us about this rezoning case.
Good morning. My name is Kim Spurrel. I serve as the city zoning administrator. The item before you is case ZAC 2025-10. This is a rezoning request to change the zoning from qualified mixed-use downtown and qualified medium-density residential to QD5, which is our qualified multiple dwelling district. The applicant is CR Endeavors on behalf of the owner, Northside Redevelopment LLC. If you look in your packets, we have a map that shows you the properties, its blocks, D2, E, F, and G in the map packet that are being rezoned with this application. So, the applicant is requesting to change the zoning in order to allow for a new development that will include townhomes, duplexes, and cottages on the site. This property is approximately eight and a half acres. Property to the north is zoned multiple dwelling district. Property to the south is general business district and mixed-use downtown, and property to the east is also zoned general business district. The city's long-range land use plan identifies blocks F and G as residential low, and blocks D2 and E are identified as mixed-use low. All of the proposed uses that the applicant intends to do on this site fit into the D5 zoning district, including townhouses, duplexes, cottages, and even single-family if they choose to do single-family. Once the rezoning is approved, the applicant would have to comply with all of the city's stormwater ordinances for new development. This property is located in the northside-southside framework plan area. Because this property is in the middle of three different neighborhoods, we've asked the applicant to attend the Evergreen, Druid Hills, and Norwood neighborhood meetings for a vote. And the vote, if you look in your packets, it's a little confusing. The original rezoning request included a commercial rezoning component in addition to the residential, and so that commercial component was withdrawn. So, all we're considering today is the residential rezoning. So, the Druid Hills, Evergreen, and Norwood neighborhoods all supported the residential rezoning request. This item went before the zoning advisory committee on August 5th on 2025, and they voted to recommend the rezoning request. And the request then went before the planning and zoning committee on October 8th, and they recommended approval subject to one condition, that the height of all structures be limited to 35 feet. So, the item before you today is the request to rezone to qualified multiple dwelling with that Q condition that the height of all structures would be limited to 35 feet. And the applicant is here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Good morning, Brian Wolf. We are at 64th Street South here in Birmingham. Good to be before you. I don't really have much to add to what Kim had mentioned, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We're very excited about this project. It'll be the first project of new construction on the Caraway site post- demolition that we're wrapping up right now. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I've got a question. So, the Norwood neighborhood specifically, they recommended approval, but they had a number of additional Q conditions that are included in the packet, you know, that would exclude a variety of uses. So, I think the item that's before us contains one Q condition that limits the height to 35 feet. I just wanted to ask you regarding these, you know, this recommendation from the Norwood neighborhood for these other Q conditions, and some of these are, you know, completely, or all of them are completely unrelated to the proposed use of residential things like a cemetery or outdoor farmer's market, you know, that sort of thing. Would you be amenable to the inclusion of those suggested Q conditions as well?
Yeah, I don't believe, I'm going from memory here because it's been a while since I read their Q conditions, but I believe you're accurate. I think they kind of went through the zoning and, okay, here we go.
And they applied to the commercial rezoning?
Oh, these applied to the commercial rezoning. Okay, I'm sorry. So, we have removed that portion of the, of the application. So, these were specifically for the commercial part of the rezoning, and as Kim mentioned, we removed that because we had some work to do based on some comments we got back.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarity.
Yeah.
Any members of the council, Councilor Gunn?
Yes, just one question, I guess, as a point of clarity. What is the thought behind the Q condition that limits the height to 35 feet?
I think I may be able to offer some insight on that. So, the planning and zoning committee has been working with planning staff regarding the height limitations for the D5 zoning, and one of the issues that has brought this about was the framework rezoning plans. And, you know, what has happened in some neighborhoods throughout Birmingham is that previously, the height limitation on D5, I think, was 65 feet, 60 feet. So, you had D5 zoning in neighborhoods where you had, you know, single-family residential properties and then a D5 lot right next to it. And so, the idea was, or the idea going forward is to limit, to revise our zoning code and limit the height in D5 to 35 feet. So, this would align with that proposal going forward. So, that's something that the planning commission still needs to consider, and the planning and zoning committee needs to consider with respect to the zoning code. But seeing that that is moving forward through that process, I believe the idea is to make this align with what we're proposing to do. Other questions? All right. Okay, this is a public hearing, and so are there any members of the public that wish to speak for or against this rezoning? Yes, sir. Come to the mic and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. I am Ronald Williams. I live at 1611 Caraway Boulevard, right across from where the star was on the hospital. So, my question has to do with quality of life issues in this area. I get to attend a lot of the concerts by default because I live across the street, not that I want to attend them. So, I'm concerned about extra traffic in the neighborhood and also noise. So, I don't know if those things have been addressed, how that affects the people that live right across from there.
Yes, sir. So, appreciate you stating your concern. The issue really before us right now is, is the proposed rezoning of this property. So, understand where you're coming from with respect to the additional traffic, and maybe Mr. Wolf can speak to, you know, whether or not a traffic study has been conducted with respect to, you know, having additional residential properties there. But in, in respect to, you know, the potential noise concerns related to the amphitheater, you know, that's a completely separate issue.
Well, my question also, will this add to the noise? Because you've got extra people there. I enjoy living there. I enjoy the peace and quiet of my neighborhood, and I'm concerned about that disturbing. Most of us are over 70 and that live, that strip right across from the hospital there. And I don't think that our concerns have been heard through the Norwood meeting because most of us don't know when it meets, and so those are my concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll address the traffic first. We did do a traffic study, and we also did a parking study as well. The parking study was approved by city staff. We were one of the, actually, I know we were the first to do a transportation demand management plan, which is a new item in our zoning code that just recently got added when we changed our parking requirements. So, we definitely meet all the needs in terms of parking for this facility long-term at full build-out. As you remember, there are four parking garages on this site that we plan to rehabilitate and bring back into production. Two of those have already been rehabilitated. The second and the third one will be rehabilitated in the next few years as we begin some of that vertical development that comes back. In terms of just quality of life issues, we have been very deliberate about complete streets coming back in this neighborhood. So, making sure that we have adequate pedestrian facilities in place, crosswalks, sidewalks. We do not want folks to feel like they have to get in their car and drive two blocks. We want them to feel like they have a safe place to cross, whether that's at Caraway, coming from Norwood, or from Druid Hills, to get over and use this facility long-term where there's going to be other entertainment options as well as restaurants being built out over time, in addition to grocery stores in the future. So, we're trying to be very deliberate about that because we want people that live in this neighborhood that we're talking about today to be able to walk out their front door and feel comfortable walking their kids down the city walk, for example, and using those facilities. And fortunately, the city's made those investments, both in city walk and in the infrastructure in that area surrounding the BJCC, and so we do have a good head start on that, but we are committed to doing that as we move forward, too.
Councilor Tate, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the gentleman that came to the mic. I see Ms. Edna Freeman. I want to acknowledge Ms. Freeman and Ms. Mason also, and appreciate you, Brian, and Mr. Wolf, for your, you know, just breaking it down, explaining. But I grew up, you know, on 25th Street North, went to MacArthur School. My grandmother has a home on 20th Avenue North where my aunts both still reside. You know, remembering the many families that the Caraway Hospital employed and saw people that I grew up with, raised family. So, it's, you know, it's always been, you know, a busy corridor, the char house. I can remember running, you know, up the street, going in the back of Caraway, going to the 10th floor to the, you know, to the dietary, getting me some ice cream. But I'm happy and excited. Never in my wildest dream did I imagine that I would see Caraway transform the way that it is going to transform. You know, I'm super excited for the residents and the constituents and the people that we attract, you know, to move back, you know, to that area. Highway 31 is a very busy corridor, and I can appreciate my elder, you know, been living there, you know, in his seventies. Really, really appreciate you staying, you know, in the district. So, I hear your concerns, and, you know, I think that the developer would do a great job to control, you know, you know, the noise and the flow. But I think in the, in the long range of all of these, I think we all appreciate what we'll see, you know, coming in, the transformative effort that's going to take place in these neighborhoods.
Okay. Mr. Wolf, if you would, just, you know, give us a broad overview of the type of planned development for these parcels?
Yeah, sure. So, our first phase will consist of 64 homes. So, it'll be a mixture of townhomes, cottages, duplex, triplex. They will be positioned along an internal street, if that makes sense. Along with that, we will be building out some, some areas to be able to walk pets, to put playground equipment, things of that nature to make it more of a community feel. So, there's kind of an internal zone for people to feel safe and congregating around. You know, one of the things we always try to do in communities, whether they be apartments or lower-slung communities like this, is to try to have those opportunities for people to have accidental run-ins with their neighbors. So, you know, when you're out walking your dog, hey, I see Mr. O'Quinn walking his dog, and we talk, and we, you know, we're able to socialize a little bit, which is a little bit kind of missing in our culture today. We're trying to be very intentional about those design elements because we want to kind of promote what's already in Druid Hills and neighborhood, which is a neighborhood, and trying to make sure we have sidewalks and things of that nature in place. But the first phase will be 64 units. I think we have planned a little over 120 in total. So, the balance of that will be in Phase 2, which we plan to build later on as soon as we get these out of the ground and we start to move forward on those. We have to kind of break it down into smaller tranches.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. At this time, we'll call for the vote.
Voting should be up. Councilmember?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. O'Quinn, do we, before we start the vote, do we have another person that wanted to speak for or against?
I'll reset it.
You'll state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Denise Mason. I'm at 1527 Druid Hill Drive, and I am very happy about CR Endeavors coming in to make Caraway be all that it can be. I'm very happy about that. But I'm very concerned that all of the rental property, all I hear them talk about is rental property. When CR Endeavors first came to our neighborhood, they told us that they would have some of their things that things that they were going to build was going to be ownership. I do not want my neighborhood to become just over with rental property. We already have a lot of apartments there. And the first time they came for us to even put them in our neighborhood to start Caraway, they said that they would put some things for ownership. If they're gonna do the townhomes and the cottages and the single homes, I would like for them to place ownership on some of the things that they're doing besides just rental property. The other things that I was concerned about was where was all the rental property going to park? Because it's still going to be around the amphitheater and the BJCC. And so those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quinn.
Mr. Wolf, would you care to address those comments?
Yes. Very good questions, by the way. Um, on the ownership front, we have, if you remember back when Caraway was, you know, blowing and going in its, in its heyday, they had acquired a little over, almost fifty residential properties that are scattered throughout Norwood and Druid Hills. And I think back in during that time, they used those properties for resident doctors and even nurses that were, that were um, working at Caraway um, for housing. Most of those houses, actually, all those houses have been demolished before we purchased them. So we, we own probably close to fifty lots that are scattered throughout Druid Hills and Norwood right now. Our intention and what we're working on right now as part of a larger housing strategy at Caraway is to make those for sale. So rebuilding single-family homes on those lots in those neighborhoods and selling them to folks. Like, and doing it in a passion that allows people that are, make them attainable. So we've been working with one of your former colleagues, Carol Clark, um, and her organization. And then also with the Housing Authority as well to try to create um, some different, or really utilize some of the existing programs that are in place for first-time home buyers and folks that are trying to get out of rental housing and get into for-sale housing. And that's something that is going on right now. We're in the throes of doing that. So that is not something we have walked away from. It's something we've really engaged with. Because we do feel like, you know, great neighborhoods like Druid Hills and Norwood, we need to continue down that, that cycle of homeownership to make sure those neighborhoods are stabilized and remain stabilized over time. In terms of parking, again, we've done a traffic, uh, Transportation Demand Management Study. We will self-park this, this facility that we're talking about today inside the property that we're rezoning. It will not be utilizing street parking, although there's plenty of street parking around there. On amphitheater event days, um, the amphitheater events utilize the parking garages and some other vacant lots that are around the property that we're not currently redeveloping. And they also, as y'all know, they use a lot of the BJCC parking assets and there's a shuttle system they utilize to keep people up. And as we develop that over time, we work with the BJCC every year to, to um, basically revise that plan based on our development needs during the season. So that plan changes from year to year as we develop that over time. But we, we are confident we have plenty of parking for everybody that's proximate and, and close to their home.
Okay. Um, just a question. So in our packet, you, the proposed townhomes and cottages are, believe are on lots, D two E enough. Um, and then uh, parcel G is, or block G, uh, is marked for future development. You know, remembering back to the conversation early on, sort of what, you know, the, the concept for the redevelopment of the Caraway properties, you know, the northern end block G was, you know, lower density type properties that would, you know, resemble um, single-family or duplexes, quadplexes, that, that sort of thing. So is that still the intention?
It is. That would be probably our third phase of development. Um, we don't own that entire block. If, if, if you're familiar with that area, there's a gas station on the corner of, I believe that's um, that's Nineteenth and, and Caraway right there. There's a gas station on that corner. We own probably two-thirds of the block behind it. There's still some single-family homes. So our job in that, in that third phase would be to make sure we put duplex, triplex cottages in that zone that fits in with everything else that's going on there and would basically be a complement to what we've done on the remainder of Phase One and Phase Two. So they all work together.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, if we don't have any other questions, we'll return to the vote.
Counsel President Alexander.
Aye.
All right, got you.
All right. Is that everybody?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number one passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Should be item twenty-one. This is on page eight. Excuse me. In order to approving a broadband service franchise agreement with Farmers Telecommunications Corporation under which the city of Birmingham will grant to Farmers Telecommunications Corporation the right to install and operate in city right-of-way a middle mile for fiber optic infrastructure network for the purpose of providing telecommunications and communications services for a term of twenty years renewable for up to two successive terms of five years each. And Farmers Telecommunications Corporation will pay to the city a franchise fee equal to five percent of gross revenue received by Farmers Telecommunications Corporation and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. And this is an item of permanent operation. I need you see to pass it today.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Counselor Member Gunn. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Vassa.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor President Pro Tim Tate.
Aye.
Counselor President Alexander.
Aye.
All right, motion on the item, please.
Move the on.
Item is before you.
All right, councilors. This item has been recommended by the Chair of Transportation and Infrastructure, and it is an opportunity to grant um, service, broadband services franchise agreement. Any questions, Dr. O'Quinn? Did you have any comments?
Um, I don't, I don't, um, these franchise agreements are, are pretty standard contract language and um, so we didn't have any recommendation.
Any questions? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Voting should be open. That vote should be up, Madam President.
All right, the item number twenty-one passes. Next item.
Item twenty-two. In order to approving a fiber optic franchise agreement with MCI Communications Services LLC. Under which the city of Birmingham will grant MCI Communications Services LLC the right-of-way to install and operate in city rights-of-way a fiber-based communication system for a term of twenty years renewable up to two successive terms of five years each. And MCI Communications Services LLC will pay to the city a franchise fee equal to five percent of gross revenue received by MCI Communications Services LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Again, an item of permanent operation. I need you see to pass it today.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Counselor Member Gunn. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Vassa.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods. Counselor President Pro Tim Tate.
Aye.
Counselor President Alexander.
Aye.
Motion on the item.
Move the on.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. This is another um, renewal for fiber optic franchise agreement. It was recommended, does come from recommendations from the Transportation and Infrastructure Chair. Any questions regarding this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're ready for the vote.
Voting should be open. Counselor Member Vassa. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item twenty-two passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, it should be item twenty-three.
Yes.
A resolution approving and authorize the mayor to execute for and as the act of said city a project agreement with Carver Jones Market LLC. It's substantially the same form as on file in the office of the city clerk and as before this council under which CJM will lease and upfit existing retail space located at eight thirty-three Denison Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one zero, containing approximately ten thousand square feet formerly occupied by Save-A-Lot Food Stores and the Heritage Park Town Center that will deliver everyday low prices on items such as meats, fruits, vegetables, dairy, beverages, snacks, and health and beauty aids to meet the needs and desires of shoppers in local neighborhoods in an amount up to but not to exceed eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to amendment number seven seventy-two.
What's the item?
Second.
All right, thank you, councilors. This is an item that has um, is being recommended by the mayor. It did go, did go before the Budget and Finance and the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. Counselor Smithman, you asked this item to be moved. I know you probably want to get more information.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, well, Madam President, do you mind if we call, you know, IO and the developer to come up?
Yes, yes, very much. Uh, if we could have IO, I know this has been presented to us, but we'd like to get more information, full discussion of the item, please.
Good morning. Uh, Coryate Hauser, uh, Director of Economic Development, Innovation, Economic Opportunity, and also have uh, Irenio Johnson, Project Manager with the department as well. So before you today is an incentive agreement that will backfill the old Save-A-Lot Grocery Store, which is a critical corridor ensuring essential grocery uh, anchor will serve as a foundational element of the neighborhood stabilization. This propose, uh, proposal represents more than an incentive. It's a strategic investment explicitly designed to meet a market opportunity. By offering a target performance-based incentive, the city helps mitigate the initial risk of the initial operating costs, building a, I mean, bridging the financial gap. This model is not theoretical. It aligns with successful incentive structures previously approved by the council uh, for grocery stores in Birmingham. The council may recall earlier this year, we entertained DG Market in this same space. Unfortunately, that uh, opportunity did not materialize, so we're excited to bring this opportunity back before you uh, to date a backfill of the space. The, the severity of food access in Birmingham is a real challenge, uh, and it spreads across the entire city. The majority of Birmingham's population is in a census tract food desert, and that is not statistical uh, metric, but it is defined daily reality for our residents here in Birmingham. This universal impact transformed the grocery attraction strategy from localized district to an essential city infrastructure planning necessitating support from the city. Additional issues persist around the nation. For example, in markets like Chicago, facing challenges as well. In twenty twenty-four, Whole Foods, Save-A-Lot, and Aldi's all shuttered locations, uh, six of them and within two years. The sheer scale of underserved population validates the inherent demand for the stores proving uh, challenges and structural access rather than market viability. We understand pricing matters as such as uh, proximity. And in Carver Jones Market, they have a three-tier structure pricing model that serves all income levels. The incentive serves as a critical bridge to unlock the demands to ensure business succeeds through equitable infrastructure provision. Food insecurity has immense, serious consequences that lead to greater chronic disease, poor mental health among children and uh, adults. Additionally, the lack of nutritious food not only damages physical health, but impairs human capital development, chronic ill illness, and undermines the ability for people to finish schooling and also maintain consistent employment. By approving this grocery investment, the city directly contributes to improving public health outcomes, fostering more productive and resilient workforce. Grocery stores, in particular underserved areas, function as high utility community assets. The structure of this proposed agreement adheres strictly to the successful implementation by the Birmingham City Council, which we have done in the past, to sustain grocery access uh, in our city. The current climate of the retail market volatility places intense pressure on food systems locally, making an immediate intervention essential to prevent long-term decline compounding uh, blight. Recent significant market changes, such as the announcement of when Dixie plans to sell off all Alabama stores by the end of twenty twenty-five, demonstrates how quickly vital access can vanish from communities. When a key retailer anchors vacant large spots, the ripple effect uh, of blight and decline can quickly reverse incremental gains in community. The existing space targeted for this replacement grocery stores limit the window uh, that we have. Allowing a site to linger in dormant commercial assets creates a physical and social hazard compounding uh, abandonment in vacant buildings prevalent in low-access areas. This investment is an essential component to Birmingham and it is increasingly available to diversify groceries that we have here in Birmingham. Obviously, with any new business, they're going to hire new staff. Uh, so they've proposed to hire thirty new staff, and I'll let the developers talk about that hiring plan. But this investment ensures the stability, opportunity, and enhanced quality of life. The request before you today is, is the necessary response to a market opportunity by delivering vital food infrastructure for the health, productivity of the population, and the stability of Birmingham's neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I would like to go ahead and, and let the owners um, make, give us information and then we'll entertain questions from the council.
Well, thank you. Uh, my name is James Harris. I am the CEO of Carver Jones Market LLC. So uh, this is a great privilege for me personally, because it's part of my heart of what I want to see take place in blighted communities, which happen to be in a lot of African-American communities, uh, thirty-five hundred across the South and Southeast. This is a very difficult problem to solve, but make no mistake, it is a problem. And it's one that um, that's birthed out of my experience that I'm going after, after thirty years of experience in the grocery industry. So I'm um, passionate about this. Um, the very name Carver Jones speaks up much about what we want to be after and be about. So I'll be entertaining any, I'm trying not to bore you with too many details, but whatever you want to ask me is.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll turn it back over and let Counselor Smithman start with questions first.
Okay. Uh, actually, my first question is about what's in the resolution contract. I know the item twenty-three says is an amount up to but not to exceed eight hundred and fifty thousand, but in the attachment is only, the number is six hundred thousand. Why is that?
So there are six hundred thousand that's upfront incentive, um, and then the others are tax abatements in a year. So it's up to two years that they get to um, claim for the sales tax abatement. So the only upfront cash, and based on some of the feedback that we got from committees, I do want to note that we did add, they get three hundred thousand within ninety days of full execution of the agreement, and then three hundred thousand after thirty days of grand opening to secure uh, and limit that risk. So that's a change that you see in the contract today, uh, that was not in the committee, but based on feedback that we received.
And thank you for that. I really want to thank, um, even though Counselor Williams isn't here, Counselor Williams, uh, Counselor Smith, I forgot who's on the other committee, because I know that came out of that. I, I really do appreciate that. Um, my, I have a, can you talk about the staffing plan? I know Coryate mentioned that you had, and we talked about this, thirty new staff, but what's the plan for that?
Yeah. Well, in our key departments for management, produce, and meat will be experienced people. That's very important. The rest of the staff that will be laborers from the community. As a matter of fact, we really want to see about fifty percent of that staffing to be high school and first-year college students. That's very important for us. Uh, that's the way to grow the market, to grow their experience, is get young people into the workforce in this area. So that's what that would look like.
Okay, and with those colleges, and we talked about this, include Lawson State, Jeff State, uh, Renata High School, I think they're a cool near the park, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you talk about the three-tier pricing level that was mentioned?
Sure. Well, one of the things that we came to understand is that not all the residents in a community want to buy what we call store brand. all the residents in a community want to buy what we call store brands. So we brought in national brands and and the faster-moving categories. And then we also saw that we needed to, and this case is very prevalent in this community, because there's a Dollar General and a Family Dollar just almost in rocks throw of that location. And one of the things that they do, uh in particularly in health and beauty aid, but in other areas as well, that we can compete against, is what we call value product. That's that dollar twenty-five item that you see. It's sized that way and it's priced that way. We integrate it into our mainstream of products. So if you've got Oreo cookies, then you're gonna have a value item item right next to it. And so it it allows that customer choices, and so that's that's the three-tier pricing program.
Okay, um and what forms of payment will you accept?
All but American Express. That's the only one that we want to accept.
Okay, um have you spoken to the neighborhood about this project?
We have done some. Um, I don't want to, um, I didn't want to build hopes up until we got closer to the finish line to make that happen, but we will, before we even start uh revamping the store. It's very important. In fact, without the neighborhood buy-in, this won't work. And so what we have done, part of our scheme, is always to get their weight in, ask their opinion on the front end. We can't always give them everything they want, but we can at least address why we can't do it. And economically, it won't work for that particular model, but um we want their buy-in, absolutely.
Okay, um how much capital is it gonna take to renovate the space?
Yes, um, we have done our bill-out costs with everything in terms of working capital, about two point one million. So, um, that's about five hundred thousand of working capital that we're setting aside. We're also putting a pharmacy in this location as well, and so there's a bill-out cost for it of about two hundred thousand uh to make sure that it, you know, it's it's able to run as well.
Um, but how do you plan to, uh, in addition to the six hundred thousand, how are you planning to get to two point one million?
Yeah, some of it, um, uh maybe twenty-five to thirty percent of it will be barred money. That will be some of the money that we'll use to on our working capital, so we use it as we need it, as opposed to having all that in the bank. The other thing that we will do is our, we have a charity that works with us and food insecurity. And so there's grants and other things that can apply for these. It's gonna take a lot. This is not traditional, a traditional uh market that you're going after. So you have to be innovative with the way that you finance this feature. And so that's some of the things that we've learned, that that's very important to do. Because if, let me back up, when we win, everybody wins. Uh, certainly the city of Birmingham wins, the community wins, the federal government wins, the state wins. When we put people in jobs, when we provide fresh nutritious food for them, it's a win across the board. And so, as most of you know, grocery margins are very small. And so, um, it takes volume to build those type, that type platform.
Okay, so how much money is there on hand now?
We are at different points of it at this point. Again, it's on a maybe scale, uh but we have donors that have committed to help us bring this across the finish line, as well as our lender here as well, so.
So there isn't, you don't have like a number right now?
We're, they've committed to a certain dollar figure, up to two million on on the total, on this particular project.
Okay, um, just a couple more questions. Uh, so who is going to run it? Is it technically you're gonna run it? I I know you're the CEO, but who's gonna run it?
I'm always heavily involved, but we do have managers and operators involved, yes.
Okay, um, and can you talk about a little bit what happened to the first grocery store in Fairfield?
Sure. Well, there's not a one answer to that, but I will give you a kind of a big picture of it. Uh, first of all, we went into that operation that was a prototype store. In other words, you're testing your systems, you're trying to figure out what works and what doesn't work. The second thing is the city could not help at all. We asked for a two percent tax abatement. Uh, they couldn't help us in any other way in startup funds. So all of the money was donated money for that location. All of it, if some of you have been in that store, I know Councilman Quinn, you were there, some of you ladies was there. That store altogether was one point one million. Everything, fixtures, software, registers, inventory, and and working capital for a year.
Okay, um, how are you sure this won't happen here?
Well, there's no guarantees uh at all. Uh, any business uh person comes in here and tell you they can guarantee you success, I would be very, very careful of that person. But when you learn, you grow, and when you grow, you apply things that you thought you knew about this. This is very difficult to do. That's the reason why how food does it. If if it was easy, somebody would have done it by now. It's very difficult. And so it takes a lot of people going in the same direction to push something like this across the finish line. All of you represent different communities, thus you represent people. And so without that, you know, everyone puts you here, they put trust in you, they put confidence in you. That's what I'm doing, is it's all about the people at the end of the day.
Okay, I just have a couple more, but I don't wanna take all the time. I appreciate you all, this is something. And we talked about this near in my heart, because this is my home neighborhood. Uh, the house that my parents stay in is actually my great-grandmother's house. Um, and so I just remember growing up, going to Food World when it was there, so something very personal to me, because I just want to make sure that we give, and honestly, it's not even just this grocery store. Across Birmingham, being more intentional and not just giving people something just to fill a space, but to give it good food quality, you should be able to go to any corner of Birmingham and be able to get affordable food. Um, like there's a Publix and Madame President's District, which is amazing. There's the New Bama Health Stores. We have Farmers Markets, Piggly Wiggly's, uh other publics everywhere, so I just want to make sure we're very intentional before.
Absolutely. I mean, you don't do this if you don't care, okay? And you obviously care about your district and you're concerned that you're bringing somebody in that can address the problem. But let's be honest, we all have to be on the same page in terms of effort. I can't do this without you. I can't do it without the people. Otherwise, we're just throwing money out there. There's not enough profit in this business to just do that if you don't care about people. I mean, at the bottom, at the end of the day, you do these things so you can better lives and have a chance to do that. And so, um, it is hard. It is very difficult. We've asked, we're gonna be meeting with some of the pastors in the community already. We've been to pastoral meetings, we've joined groups. Those are some of the gatekeepers in the community. You know, so it it's it's a multi-facet steps that has to be taken to help ensure this to be successful. And so it's, it's difficult. It's difficult to do.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure this grocery is around four years, ten years, because what's starting to happen in that location, we had Save-A-Lot, we lost it, we got it back, then we lost Save-A-Lot, and then we had Dollar General and that fell through. And so I just don't want to keep, you know, building up this momentum to the neighborhoods, around the neighborhoods, and then we're we're failing every time, so that's.
Well, I'm, I I don't want to do that either, but I will tell you this. Carver Jones and the legacy that those men brought changed America. I am not just about changing a community. I want to change the world. And so that's a whole different piece. So to go in a community and make this a a statement like this, I love to do things with excellence. Obviously, you do too. And so that's what, you have to have people on the same page with the same goal. And that's my goal, is to do it with excellence. I think you'll be proud of, I know you will be proud of your store.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Smithman. Any other questions? I know we have um Councilor Smith, and then I'll come to you, Dr. Quinn. Councilor Smith?
Hi, good. Well, thanks again. Um, so my, um, adding to what Councilor Smithman said, um, I do recognize that we need to have a grocery store in that space, and my concerns are related to quality and sustainability, um as Councilor Smithman said. Um, in terms of quality, you know, we have this grocery store that's in Five Points West, and we've commu- uh, we've talked about this. We have this grocery store in Five Points West. The big biggest concern is around the quality of the produce and of the meat that's there. And having some kind of way that the neighbors and residents that are utilizing the grocery store can express those concerns and get some kind of relief. And I know we have quality written into the resolution, but there's really not a way for the neighborhood to be able to address those, to be able to get any kind of relief from those concerns. Um, so that is a concern of mine. Adding to what you said, you mentioned staffing issues were, were staffing issues were a problem in Fairfield? Is that? So that was not, okay, so using the same staffing model of having students from?
That's right.
Okay, that's what you did. Okay, and what hours are you considering for this location?
You know, we're going to uh look at that and uh ask the community what they would do. In the Fairfield location, we closed at six and seven. You know, those were the the time, opening up at nine and then closing. We adjusted hours as we went along, based on the traffic flow of that day. Six was the latest, or seven was the latest, excuse me, and nine, eight. We started with eight and then we went to nine, because it just didn't have enough of traffic early morning to uh justify being open that, so it cost more. It added to the cost of overhead by doing that, so we reduced those hours. So it was really all about the consumer, the people that we serve, what they wanted, you know, was responding to. On the downside of that, what we learned was, you have a school across the street, Restoration Academy is there, and every child is is carpool then. So there was a lot of traffic in that at those times, those early morning times. So we were competing with that in the early mornings, and so we backed off to nine o'clock, which gave more opportunity for people to park in front of the store during those hours. So, that's that's what we'll do. And so whatever this neighborhood uh deems, right now, I would say, uh based on just what I see in traffic flow, you know, it'll probably be at eight o'clock, uh eight to eight or eight to seven in those neighborhoods, that neighborhood of time span right now.
I know that's, that was a big concern for a lot of people going to the Fairfield location, closing really early like that, because.
We listen uh to and people, we were always listening to that, uh but we never heard that that was an issue, uh because again, we were open during that time for uh most of the first year. We were open, and so we had to pare it down, because we just didn't have the foot traffic.
Gotcha. And what timeline do you have for everything?
Well, as we are sitting here today, I would think it'll be the latter part of Q one or the first part of Q two.
So you'll, okay, so in that time, you'll be working on the financing and have everything together and open by?
Yes.
The end of the first quarter.
Yes, that's it, that's right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quinn.
Uh, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Harris, I I really enjoyed the opportunity to um visit the store in Fairfield and especially getting the opportunity to speak to you. You've been extremely modest in talking about your your background. Um, you come to this, you know, with a wealth of experience. Um, so that's one of the things that, you know, I think um for for folks, and I I do want you to talk more about your background, but um, you know, one of the things that gives me confidence in this is that, you know, you're not a novice uh at this, and so um, but like my colleagues uh have expressed, um, you know, we we haven't exactly been, uh we haven't had the best track record in terms of, you know, getting grocery stores established in our community and in you go to any community meeting and ask people what what they want for their community, and grocery store is likely going to be the number one um item, so um, you know, as I've expressed to our our Arinio and and Coryante, um, you know, we want to approach this with a uh perspective of, we want Carver Jones there, you know, for the foreseeable future. So, um, you know, I know one of the things that we we talked about um is that this is an extremely competitive market. You know, and but I know that that, you know, this is not a um, based on your and my conversation with some of the comments that you've made here this morning, you know, this is not a uh situation that you're going into where profit is, you know, pure profit motive. Um, you know, one of the things that I love, and I think this is a momentous occasion for the city, quite frankly, that, you know, we're able to get a entity like Carver Jones invested in coming in the community, because um it it's a business model that incorporates the community and uh is, you know, tries to address the cu- community's interests, so. You know, talk to me, first, I want you to, for the, for the sake of everyone hearing it, I want you to tell us a little bit more about your background and your experience, and, you know, what the future might look like beyond this store.
Um, okay, this kind of dates me a little bit, Councilman Quinn. I opened my first grocery store in Louisiana in Little Town, Kelp Midden, um, at twenty years old. And um, um, I was foolish at that time, as most young people are. And um, uh, but I just, uh, I'm not a person that likes to sit on the sideline and point fingers. If you can do something about the problem, do it, address it, care enough about it, or find somebody who does and partner with them. So, um, I started at fifteen years old in the grocery business. I started my career with Safeway, uh which was one of the largest retailers in the country. To date myself a little bit, I played basketball when I was only black on the team. You can't hide in that scenario. So, um, when I put my, uh, worked on my grocery store for the first time, I just wanted to do something, try it out. I had many years of experience and it wasn't like I didn't know what I was doing and and uh we ran it for a number of years and it supported our family. Later on, I wanted to move and do something uh on a larger scale. I was getting opportunities to grow with the company and move and and so I, we did. We um, I learned every aspect of the business from, you know, every department, worked every, every place, and then I went into Safeway's management portal. And um, that's where I really gained a lot of knowledge of the inner workings of every department, being a profit center. Um, but as time progressed, you've seen this, some of you talked about Food World. Um, the Bruno's Group that owned Food World was part of a company that I worked with in Kansas City and in the sense that we were, um, we participated in share groups. In other words, they were not in our market and we were not in their market, so we shared breast vest practices. The stores that I helped oversee, um, was over a million dollars a week volume, uh many of them. So, um, uh, the retailer was privately owned, and so um, we got, I've got a lot of experience. I had the opportunity to develop new concepts. Um, he was a very, very challenging individual. He demanded excellence. And so, uh, he didn't want to be another Me Too grocer's. So, uh, that's how we got in in relationship with the Bruno's Group. And when that plane crash happened in the nineties, that devastated that company, and they never recovered. And uh, but the market had already started to shift to suburban areas with grocery stores, meaning they were coming out of inner, you know, inner cities and that. meaning they were coming out of inters- you know, inner cities and that particular thing. It had nothing to raise it, it had all to do with the dollars. That's where the growth in housing was happening is in suburban areas and people were moving out of inner cities. Thus, those small retailers left because they couldn't compete with the Wal-Mart's and those others. Walmart has a very robust system of supplying themselves. And, uh, we couldn't compete with that. So, um, we developed some of our own internal systems to be better in some other areas and particularly imperishables. We had our own USDA smokehouse. We, we processed all our own pork. We, all of our poultry was less than two dill- kill days before it hit our markets, never frozen. Uh, produce, we literally had people on the ground picking product that would go to our stores. It never went to a warehouse. And so these are some of the concepts and ideas that we brought. Now, a lot of these things I, obviously I cannot do. But we want Carver Jones Birmingham to be the, if you would, the home office for all Carver Jones markets. We have an opportunity in Birmingham to be a catalyst for all stores around the country. And we already have been approached by twelve other cities to bring Carver Jones there because they love the concept. So, um, it is very difficult, Ms. Smithman, to do this. And we need everybody's support to make it happen. Money is part of it, but money is, in itself, is not the only answer. It's people, it's all about people. And, um, I know that's what you want as well. And so we want a champion to help do it, it's not about us, it's about the people. And we all have to keep that. If I were wanting to be a millionaire, if that was important to me, this is not what you do. It's just not what you do. So I didn't have any problems with some of the things that was asked of me, Ms. Smith. Um, in, in view of the, you know, the, the way the money was distributed or any of those things. Um, in Carver Jones, I didn't touch one penny that was spent. That was done by another group of people that paid those invoices because I did not want my name attached to it. That's just, so I have no problem with accountability at all. You either are what you are or you're not, it's just that simple. You can't hide it for very long. So coming in the store, I'll tell you our systems and how we plan on delivering fresh product to the market every day. We're not using a lot of the large distributors here, only because they're not hungry enough for these markets. They got stores within a five mile radius and quite frankly, they don't want to sell to us. That's the reality of it and that's their choice. Um, so we went outside and brought in one of the largest wholesalers in the country. It requires us to be members, we have to buy stock in that company so that we can buy from that warehouse. And so we pull, uh, most of our product out of Nashville. But they got warehouses all over the country, including New Orleans and Memphis. Nashville just happens to be the closest one for us to pull from. So we can get anything that I mentioned on the variety of product and quality.
Thank you. Councilor Protem, Councilor Gunn, yeah, Councilor Protem, then Councilor Gunn.
Madam President, I, I echo everything that my colleague saying, I know Councilor O'Quinn and myself share, um, some portions of our district and we do have a farm, Fountain Heights Farm, like, how likely is it to partner, you know, with Fountain?
Uh, I'm serious, we had talked about it for Fairfield. Uh, we have some local growers, black owned grocers and, uh, or farmers in the Black Belt area that, um, uh, we just was trying to build this, you can only do so much in twelve months. You can only do so much in one store. And this was a smaller store, so it didn't have the volume that the store is going to have at all.
And that's just my only question, we, you know, love to connect you with, you know, Dominique, um, who does a fantastic job.
Would love to talk to you.
You know, in Fountain, at Fountain Heights, her, she's deeply invested in, you know, making sure the community receives, um, healthy, uh, product. And so I think she would be a catalyst, you know, to what you're doing. So we'd be happy to, to connect you, you know, with Dominique as well.
Let me just mention one thing because I, um, I, I can't remember which one of you ladies asked me this, but we were talking about an opportunity to help the poor in the community, okay? And one of those things that we developed in Fairfield is what we call a, uh, food drive three sixty-five because hunger takes no days off. And so what we were able to do, the people in that community round up their dollar on their, their register receipt, and that money was given to the charity that bought gift cards back to the grocery store. So those people were able to buy fresh nutritious food as opposed to they all out of date, short dated product. And so it was a way to just express dignity and a lot of those cards was given to churches that have pantries or individual that knows people. And there was a lot of, um, elderly people, um, that receive those because either they get no food stamps or very little food stamp monies. And so it's another way to give back and replenish the money within the community.
Thank you. Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just have a, a few ques- well, one question in particular. Um, but before I get into my question, I know this is going to take a collective effort between the city and you all to make sure that we eradicate food deserts, uh, in our communities. Uh, because if it's left to private developers, they won't eradicate food deserts. Because if it doesn't make do- dollars, it doesn't make sense for them. So, um, I definitely applaud you for taking on this, uh, mantle. Uh, my question is mostly for the city, for us. Uh, are there any safeguards in place to protect our investment? Um, especially if in the first ninety days, the project doesn't come into fruition?
And I think Mr. Hauser is going to answer that for us.
So the initial, um, investment after the full, um, execution of the agreement, there are clawbacks in the agreement that if they don't open, then we can reclaim that funding. The separate side of that, the yearly tax abatements are in arrears and performance base. So there's very, there's no risk to the city because if they don't perform, they don't get a, uh, an incentive. So those are the two separate ones. And then the, the other part of that is we add it to the agreement, quarterly reporting. And so we'll be able to see how they're performing by the quarter and if we need to mitigate, we can. But we'll be able to see that a little closer, uh, than we've been able to see in the past.
All right, those are all of my questions and thank you so much, Mr. Harris. I'm very familiar with, um, Midden, Louisiana. I went to Louisiana Tech University. Okay. And again, like I stated in the committee meeting, I'm looking forward to having Carver Jones in District Four at some point.
There you go. Thank you very much. I want to thank each of you. I do, um, mainly have more statements than questions. I do want to thank the city for looking for an op- another opportunity to bring us a viable food option for the residents in District Six. Although, um, I don't live in District Six, that is our cousin district over there. And, um, so we do have quite a number of residents in District Seven that I feel would love to come and, um, also, uh, have an opportunity to, um, come and buy there. Um, the word choices really stuck in my mind. I just want to be sure, I know when we hear from both Councilor Smithman and Councilor Smith, um, and really speaking on for Councilor Smith, you know, we've had someone that come and gave us a lot of, um, options that we thought would be placed into the business and those have not come to fruition. And I just want to be sure because we're bringing something to our neighborhoods. I just want to be sure that the choices are there and we have a high range of needs for people. And we talk about Publix, but I know, you know, Publix has a certain market and that type thing. But I want something similar to that, that we can be sure that our residents are going to be able to get. So when you talk about choices, that really stuck in my mind. And also when you're talking about the value product. So tell me a little bit more about that mix and how you're gonna, how's that come to fruition? Because there's also the question that came up from Fairfield. Were you able to keep your products at the right level of quality? Because of maybe the low foot traffic or the distribution where you're bringing products in and out? So I am happy to hear you've got a distributor in Nashville, so at least we're two hours away. But tell us a little bit more about that project plan, how you ensure that for our residents.
Yeah, uh, really the particular two things, uh, really constitute a food desert. And that's really fresh meats and fresh produce. Those are, those are the two key items. So to mitigate the problems, let's go with produce because we start first in line with produce in our, in our operations. That's what we want people to do. It gives an impression of freshness when you walk in the store as opposed to candy or, you know, uh, sweet goods, those kinds of things. So, uh, one of the things that we do on our group, uh, in our management team at a high level is that we can source from a lot of local growers, di- different things. One of the things we were known for there was our collard greens. I mean, they're huge, and so, and so you're kind of terrified with that. Uh, collard greens, mustard greens, those kinds of things. Well, they were just within two days out of the field and into the store because they came out of the Georgia. Uh, so that's, that's three hours, four hours away. And so, um, the same thing happened to sweet potatoes, um, coming from Mississippi or some of those markets. They don't have to go into a big warehouse to be sorted first and then, and then five, six, a week later arrive at the store. The moment that product is picked, it starts, the timer starts and so it starts to deteriorate. And so, um, local grown produce is a huge, huge piece. But you're right, um, one of the things that, um, bigger retailers face in a food desert is what we call high shrink. And shrink is simply a term we use to measure what doesn't go through the register. You threw it away, somebody stole it, uh, you know, it's, it's along those lines. And so what happens to a lot of growers is that commitment to stay the course at a li- high level of quality. In other words, if it's beer bruised, throw it away. If it's, if you wouldn't buy it, don't leave it out there for the customer. Those kinds of things are, are attitudes that have to be drilled into the people. That's the reason why we want experienced people in those departments and that commitment that we have. And so early on, the first hundred days are going to be very critical for the store to really perform, to set the mindset of the people that come there, expectations of what they're going to find. Secondly is meats. Uh, one of the things that, uh, was a problem for us is that the store in Fairfield was less than eight thousand square feet. So we could not put a cutting room in that store. So we had to rely on pre-cuts and, um, that's nothing new. Um, Walmart is all pre-cuts, you know, they don't cut anything back there. They unbox it, at very best, they might wrap it, overwrap some of them. But, uh, that's a whole different level. This store has a cutting room already, so we will cut our own meats. That'll make us much more competitive and also give us a lot more variety of what we can do at a very affordable price. And so those were a couple of the things that we learned that we don't want to do again going forward.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm, uh, looking forward to this venture, I just wanted to say two things. We do want to hold you accountable, Mr. Hauser. You did say that you were going to be giving us quarterly reports, so we'd like to see those in our, uh, committee of the whole meeting. So that first quarter report, we'll be looking for that. And so, um, thank you, we appreciate that. Also, Mr. Harris, I would like to hold you accountable too, please go back to the neighborhoods. It is very important that we hear their voice and that they feel they have an input in this because they will help that foot traffic and they'll be some of the best advertisement that you can ever have, okay? And, uh, while we're shouting out people, you all talk about, you got this, um, farmer's market, what you got?
Fountain Heights Farm.
We got the best man over there in Hillman Gardens, he has the best bunch of carrots you ever wanted. And so he has a whole farm over there, so I'll hook you up with him, okay?
Thank you.
And we also have, um, thinking about pharmacy, I don't know how you plan to base that, but we do have local people here that I'm sure would, um, have ownership.
This is a local person.
That we can bring them in, um, hopefully we got the right, right one. All right, thank you, any other things, yes, Counselor?
I did want to mention that, and that just got me in thinking when my three colleagues mentioned that, uh, Roots to Harvest, they're looking, I think they already implemented a community garden into this field. So I think that would be another location. Um, we have, uh, over there in West End by Urban Ministry. They grew so many sweet potatoes that for their collard green cook-off, every attendee got a huge box of sweet potatoes. And, you know, I really love you mentioned, and they mentioned about local farmers because I was at Pepper Place Farmer's Market and one of the farmers, it really actually disturbed me what she said. She said, "Oh, I distribute to Piggly Wiggly." And so she, and I mentioned, "Oh, the West End Piggly Wiggly." And she was like, "No, I do every Piggly Wiggly but West End." So I will, it's, it's true statement. But I, that's needless to say, I would love to hear, you know, farmers coming from every side town like, "Oh, these are the greens that I picked, oh, these are the sweet potatoes I picked." And even working with the kids with the community garden, I, I, I really, I really would love to see that honestly happen.
Well, and one of the things I'm going to ask of you, all of you, please send those people to us. You know them or they've contacted you, send them to us. Um, um, I'm sure I don't know every program out there or all the people that run them. But if you hear from them, send them to, to us. The other thing that we did in the Fairfield store and will do again is really, uh, merchandising locally produced product. We had barbecue sauces, we had, um, everything from, you know, whatever there was, pizzas, whatever there was in the community because it gives an opportunity for African Americans with a product. Because I know the industry, sometimes we can connect them, help them get their product costs down because a lot of it is just strictly in the manufacturing side. And so there's what we call, um, um, you know, companies that will produce their product for them that already have a facility. And that way they're not doing the manufacturing of it, but they are holding them accountable for the recipe. And there are legal things that have to be done, but it's being done all over the country. So connecting those lines to get in that product. Even we've had, uh, a local producer, uh, that produces a lot of facial creams and makeups and those kind of things are just for African American ladies.
Okay, and then how many employees will there be per shift?
Yeah, we'll have to work through that.
Work through that, okay.
That, you know, um, depends on foot traffic. Of course, early on, we'll overstaff, you know, just to see and you then you make adjustments as you go along. Um, so we don't want to have people standing in line. We have a motto, three in line is too much time. And so we want to make sure that we have enough registers open and keep people flowing through there, yeah.
I will make this comment about the store hours, I will say that, um, that neighborhood is a different makeup. It's a lot of, uh, senior citizens, they like to go grocery shopping early.
Okay.
Um, and I don't remember how, over the times, but I do remember it being dark and, and shopping at previous grocery stores over there. So I'm excited for this, um, if this passes. Um, I look forward to the grand opening, I'll be there with my wallet and my shopping buggy. But look, I'm telling you, this has to happen because I have three voting members, I live with my mom, dad and sister. That this doesn't happen, I'm going to have to answer to them. So I, uh, really appreciate it and like my colleagues say, I hope the quality of the food continues to be just as good as the first time.
Well, I'm just committed, as committed to it as you are. Why? Because it represents me. And so I, and I represent him and I want to represent him, why? And so that's my aim.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, gentlemen. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Smith and President Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Okay. Oh, I did it for you, I'm sorry. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you very much. Item twenty-three passes, thank you, I look so forward to that endeavor taking place. All right, Counselors, at this time, Mr. Clerk, do we have any other items? All right, thank you. At this time, we are ready to entertain updates from our districts and who's ready to start? Councilor Vassa, are you ready? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, uh, the neighborhood turnout for holiday gatherings, uh, have been outstanding. Um, District Three, we've had Crestwood South, Friends of Avondale Park, Glen Iris, the Sister. the Sister Houses on Highland, and Common Ground had record turnouts. So the sense of community and holiday spirit in District Three is strong. Secondly, we have a survey online for Highland Park and Redmont Park residents related to the Southern Framework Plan. If you have not filled it out, we want to hear from you. Please visit our Facebook page for more information, Counselor Josh Fossa. And then two very exciting announcements. The Birmingham Zoo is thrilled to announce the return of its dazzling holiday tradition Glow Wild in Animal Lantern Celebration. It's going to continue select nights through January fourth. This is a wonderful exhibit that Birmingham Homes and Garden named as one of the top holiday escapes across the Southeast. So highly recommend all of us enjoy that as we can. And then lastly, we have a wonderful new tradition at Vulcan's Holidays on the Mountain that's debuting this Saturday, December sixth, from four PM to eight PM. We will have an evening filled with pictures with Santa, dances with the DJ, hot cocoa, et cetera. And not to mention, an opportunity for photos with the beloved mascot V. More information is at visitvulcan.com. That concludes announcements for District Three.
Thank you very much. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. As far as neighborhood meetings, we have two today. Oakwood Place will have theirs at four PM at Harrison Park Recreation Center. Mason City will meet at four thirty today via teleconference. The dialing number is seven one two, seven seven, eight zero one seven. And the code is eight four three, four two six. Then tomorrow, the North to this field neighborhood will meet at five PM at Memorial Park Recreation Center. Then at four thirty that same day, the Cultural Arts Center will be having their grand opening for their event space called The Grove. That's very exciting. I put some of my ARPA funding into building too, but it's just for an event space for parties, seminars, et cetera. So I'm really excited about that space. West End Manor has their neighborhood meeting on Monday, December eighth, at five PM at New Hope Baptist Church. And then the UAB Mobile Market Tour will take place on Monday, December eighth, from one thirty to two PM. I think they're unveiling something. And it's at the UAB National Alumni Society House. Then the Birmingham Mobile Library Book Mobile will be at Rowan Park. Oh, that was yesterday. I think that's it, Madam President. I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I really enjoyed seeing everybody's Thanksgiving giveaways. I know we have a joint service project, so thank you to Counsel Disha for that. I think that'll be really good. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Smith?
So we have several neighborhood holiday events coming up over the next week. The Fairview Neighborhood is having their holiday event right now, eleven o'clock at the Opportunity Center. Thomas Neighborhood is meeting this evening at Greater St. Thomas, six o'clock. Central Park is having their holiday activity at the West Precinct this upcoming Saturday, December sixth at five o'clock. Also on Saturday, just as a reminder, that we have the Bama Health Foods Nourish Gusher opening up from ten to five. Other activities taking place, the All-City Christmas Music Festival will be at the Boutwell this Thursday at four PM, I'm sorry, Thursday, December fourth at seven PM. That's going to be all of our students coming together to share their musical talents. And Birmingham Sister Cities is hosting their IDEA Ghana cohort graduation this Saturday. So hopefully everyone received an invitation. That's the Saturday, December sixth at Miles College at ten AM. And that is everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dunn?
Thank you, Madam President. Tis the season for our holiday cheer. And with that, we have a few holiday events coming up in District Four. The Roebuck Neighborhood Association will have their neighborhood meeting on December the fifteenth. And their holiday social will be on Sunday, December the fourteenth, from three thirty to six PM at the Gabriella Manor. The Zion City Neighborhood will host their neighborhood Christmas party on December the eleventh at the Birmingham East Precinct at twelve PM. And then the Kilo Springs Neighborhood will be hosting a coat drive for the students at Smith Middle School on December the tenth. So if anyone is interested, please reach out to our office if you'd like to help donate coats. And we will coordinate with the Neighborhood Association. As far as Neighborhood Associations come, meetings coming up, we have the Engle Nook Neighborhood Association that takes place next Monday at five thirty PM at the Engle Nook Recreation Center. We have the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association meeting, which takes place next Monday as well at six PM at the Willowood Recreation Center. And then we have the Northeast Lake Neighborhood Association, which takes place next Tuesday at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. And lastly, we have Penfield Park, which is next Tuesday at six PM at the Brownsville Heights Community Center. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Quickly, the Apple Valley and Spring Lake Neighborhood Association meetings have been canceled this month. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood will meet this Thursday, December fourth at seven PM. That meeting is still being held via Zoom. Also, Roebuck Neighborhood Meeting will meet on December eighth at six thirty PM at the East Police Precinct. Budget and Finance Committee will be held Monday, December eighth at three thirty PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Agenda submissions are due tomorrow, Wednesday, December third at noon. Want to invite everybody out. Did some pretty cool last year. Partnered with the library to bring holiday photos with Santa. And so that, that really came off really well. And so we're going to do that again this year. The library has a really great array of events and arts and crafts and just holiday things to do. And we'll be having Santa visit again. And you can get your picture taken with Santa. They will print it for you right there on the spot and make sure you're getting in the holiday spirit. And so want to invite everybody out to that on Tuesday, December ninth. That's going to be from five PM to seven PM at the Springfield Road Library. And I just got worried yesterday about a really cool hot chocolate station. So make, make sure you get there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by thanking the Mayor Woodson and the Mayor's Office and especially Elena Melton for the State of Homelessness event that occurred at Regent Field yesterday. It's extremely well put together and organized. And the messaging was, was on point. And, you know, set an ambitious goal of reducing homelessness by forty percent in, in the city of Birmingham over, you know, the next year or so. So look forward to working with the Mayor's Office to, to help achieve that and in all of our partners. I mean, one of the things that really came through in that event is that, you know, this is not something that the city by itself or, you know, any particular organization can solve on its own. It really takes the entire community to come together. And, you know, that was one of the things that was great about the event was that you had all of these community partners that work in that space and, and folks from the private sector who were helping to sponsor the event. So it was really the, you know, type of coordination and folks working together that we have, you know, we talk about frequently about breaking down the silos. So it was sort of like a dawning of a new day in Birmingham with respect to that event. And again, just really well put together. In other announcements, we have the Mahoma Neighborhood Association meeting this Thursday, December fourth at six PM at the East Lake Public Library. And Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday at six PM at the Harris Homes Recreation Center. We also want to remind folks that we have a District Five residents. We want to remind folks that the District Five Holiday Brunch and Resource Fair is coming up on Friday, December twelfth, from ten AM to one PM at the Harris Homes Gym located at six hundred Brussels Circle. We're really excited about this event because we are going to be recognizing our seniors. So we have identified seniors from throughout District Five and asking them to come dressed in their finest. And we're going to have a senior pageant. So really looking forward to, to that. If you would like to get involved and need more information, please contact my office at two oh five, two five four, two six seven nine. And then always want to remind folks about the Pepper Place Farmer's Market. Got a couple of weekends left. It runs till December thirteenth. And that'll be the last market for the season. So that concludes the announcements for District Five.
Thank you so much. Madam Proten?
Thank you, Madam President. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings, but there are Neighborhood Holiday Sociahs. So the Wyland Neighborhood Association is having their Christmas Holiday Social tonight at six PM at the Wyland Library. And a Cypico Finley Neighborhood Association will be having their Christmas dinner on Wednesday, December the third at the Cypico Plant Community Room in North Birmingham. Neighborhood Association will have their Christmas party on Monday, December the eighth at the North Birmingham Library. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, December the ninth at one PM in the Council Chamber. Please submit all your agenda items by email, no later than Wednesday, December the third, no later than twelve noon, to Gregory Stanley at Birmingham AL.gov and Ashantas.Cefus at BirminghamAL.gov. We didn't get a chance, I didn't get a chance to attend the unhoused summit on yesterday, but I know that my colleagues got some great information that they will share out. And again, I echo what Counselor Quinn said. Thank the mayor, thank Elena for all the hard work that she has given, you know, to this project. And it does take a collective effort to solve unhoused issues in a holistic way. So looking forward to working with Elena and all of the partners as we eradicate, you know, an issue that's happening all across America. So two more announcements, Madam President. Mental health training is sponsored by District Nine and Black Women's Mental Health Institute. It's going to be on Friday, December the fifth, from nine AM to four PM. And it's virtual. So you can actually register at www.bwmhi.org forward slash dot community. Or you can call two oh five, four four zero, two eight three seven. So there's some mental health first aid training. So I would highly recommend people to take this course. It's identifying and understanding response to signs of mental illness and substance use disorders. The Black Women Mental Health Institute is, is ran by Dr. Nadia Richardson Johnson. So excited to be in partnership, you know, with her that she does free mental health through, through our District Nine. Okay, and the final announcement is our Merry Kickmas. It's not Christmas, but Kickmas, like we, so I am in partnership with Be Kind Birmingham. And we are doing a Merry Kickmas. Where we will, we'll be providing two hundred pair of brand-new kicks to young people, ages infant to eighteen, sizes two C to fifteen. So the registration date is North Birmingham Library, December the tenth. It's at North Birmingham Library on December the tenth from, oh, this is, okay. The registration date is North Birmingham Library, December the tenth at three PM. Let me correct that. And East Enslie Library, December the seventeenth at eleven AM. So this event will take place on December the twentieth from ten AM to one PM at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center. So you will, once you register, you will get a time slot and you come to the event according to your time slot. So we giving away kicks for Christmas, making sure people are, feet stay warm. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. These are announcements for District Seven. Most of our Neighborhood Association meetings are canceled for the month in December in lieu of the following holiday events. On Friday, December fifth, the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association will hold their holiday social. They'll kick that off at three PM at the Powley Library. That's thirty-three oh one Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Then after we get through celebrating the holiday over at Jones, the Jones Valley Neighborhood, we're inviting all of District Seven to come out to our Christmas gathering. That's from six to eight PM on Friday, December fifth. And we'll hold it at Lawson State Community College. And so we're just asking everyone to come out, have a great time. We will be honoring some of our residents in District Seven. We're also asking each resident to come and bring an unwrapped toy. And we'll be giving away some toys to children in our district. And we're just going to have a lot of fun, food, and festivities. So again, that's six to eight PM, February fifth, that's Friday, at Lawson State Community College. Then on Saturday, we're going to mosey on down to the Germania Park Neighborhood. They're going to be having a Christmas toy drive. That'll be at nine AM at South Park Baptist Church. And that's at twenty-three forty-one Pearson Avenue Southwest. And we'll conclude the week at Monday. We'll be with the Powley Neighborhood for their holiday social. That'll be at five thirty on Monday, December eighth, at the Henry Crumpston Rec. Center. And that's three forty-six Gloria Road. We have more that we'll be announcing next week, but we're just in a partying spirit in District Seven. So come on out and join us. I'd also like at this time to thank these particular neighborhood officers for their service. They've announced that they will be retiring from their office and they're no longer serving in the Riley Neighborhood. That's President Beverly O'Tchuba and the Vice President Linda Wilder. So we thank them for their years of service. And so we'll be looking for our neighborhood services offices will be helping to assist them in the management of those neighborhoods while, until we have an opportunity to have new officers. At this time, that concludes all of our announcements. And Mr. Clerk, could you let us know who we have signed up for Community Voices?
Joseph Holt.
Mr. Holt, as you come forward, we have three minutes. And if you'll just give us your name and address again, thank you.
My name is Joseph Holt. My address is seven seventeen Eleven Street, Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one one. I'm here to just reiterate, I came here two weeks ago about the police officer threatening me, threatening to kill me at my building and told me if he catches me again, he's going to kill me. I filed a complaint July third, July seventh. Mr. Gold, Internal Affairs, I sat with him. He never called me back. I gave emails to the Chief of Staff last two weeks ago about another Internal Affairs person, never contacted me still. The mayor office hadn't contacted me still. The Chief of Police hadn't contacted me still. When I came here, I'm coming here because this is recorded. So nobody can say I didn't tell y'all that. Part of the reason why I'm here is the city council is part of public safety, okay? And so I came here and reported it. And I gave the emails to Mr. Sparks. And the Chief of Staff didn't call me. The man still is threatening my life and nobody's doing nothing about it. So I just want to make sure all this stuff is recorded. And I'm telling y'all again, a couple of police officers are concerned about me. They said they saw Ms. Alexander and Mr. Woods at the police station yesterday, asked me to y'all follow up on what happened to me. And so I want to read this at the end, the Birmingham Police Department mission. Our mission is to provide the highest quality police service to impact crime, build community trust, and improve quality of life. Highest quality. Haven't heard from them. The incident happened July third. This is December the second. I haven't heard from Internal Affairs, Chief Police, the mayor, or nothing. So I'm making sure, I'm letting y'all know again, I came here two weeks ago. I still haven't heard from nobody. It says the highest quality, operating integrity, vision. This is on the website. I followed every procedure as a citizen, community complaint, Internal Affairs complaint, two of them, nothing. This is all I have. Thank you. I just came here because this is being recorded. I want to make sure nobody can say they didn't know that this is happening. Thank you for your time.
Holt, and we do appreciate you. We do have a Public Safety Advisory Committee where we also, you have an opportunity to voice those complaints with them. But we appreciate you bringing us this update. And again, we've turned that over to the administrative offices. And so we appreciate you coming back again today. Thank you. Next.
Willie Jenkins?
Good afternoon, City Council, eleven oh five South Wood Drive. Willie Jenkins. I'll come to you, let y'all know that. I'll come to you, let y'all know that we is having, uh, annual Christmas. I'll be Santa Claus. This is our annual Christmas luncheon. All the men of prayer, we having this, uh, gonna be at the Encore Theater. Theater sixteen oh four, Second Avenue North. It gonna start at six oh clock, and I will be Santa Claus. And we gonna have food and everything, so I want to invite all the city council to come, to come, to hella celebrate. And also, I want you, uh, to, uh, don't forget, um, ones of fox, Mr. Count, ones of fox, you know, and ones of fox, and, uh, and, uh, what else? I, I would have something else I had. Also pray for one of my church member, Clementine Murdock, and, um, and also one of my classmate, lost her daughter. I want y'all to pray for her. She was real sick, and I just want to ask y'all to pray for, um, Melinda Bryan, you know. It's gonna be a cham- her from, about a cham- a film home. And I wanna let you know that I, I might go to the parade this coming, um, Sunday. And I heard about the mail, um, like the tree, and I will be Santa Claus here. I don't know when, but y'all let me know. I, I am ready. I'm ready to be Santa Claus. Also, my birthday coming up, December twenty nineteen fifty-four. I'll be seventy-one years old. And also, we had a homecoming Church Anniversary. Miss Alexander, I would like to, you to come. We gonna have over, car ride pants on. And we gonna, we gonna cook, and we got our own favorite Reverend Marvin Connor from Old Street, our favorite pastor, used to be the pastor of Old Street. And he gonna be the guest speaker for our annual, um, homecoming Church Anniversary this coming, this coming Sunday. And, uh, yeah, I wanna let, everybody, everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. We have a nice Thanksgiving too. But we did working in the church. We put new carpet down in our church, and we worked, the men always helped to, uh, us, Old Street, to look out for our church. And we did what we did. We looked out, and it was, it was real nice, you know, it, it figured out real nice, the coffin and stuff. And also, this program for the people lost one in their family, you know, that so much has happened to our little children now. I care for our children, you know, we gotta look for our children, loved one, you know, loved one. So much is going on. We just have to pray for our, uh, children. And Ashton Henderson, this the guy got killed, my nephew, uh, Tina boy, she, our nephew got killed. But I just want to ask the Lord, this, y'all just pray for the whole entire world, cause this is a mess. These young folks is, they, they something there, they, they, they going wild. Just have to sit out and pray for them. But I'm, I'm, I just want y'all to, y'all let me know when y'all ready to come down here to be Santa Claus. I'll be, I'm, I, I am ready to be Santa Claus for this Christmas, you know, Christmas, celebrate Christmas. I am ready. And, um, just like I said, y'all invited to our homecoming Church Anniversary, our own Marvin Connor, Old Street gonna be the guest speaker. And you invited too, Mr. Gunn, you invited to my church. And you get chance to see us sing, you know, me, we, we gotta combine choir, men's and choir. All us gather to sing, you know. But I, I'm, I'm being with the men of prayer for a, a long time, you know. And, uh, hope y'all get chance to come see us sing. We gonna sing Christmas song, and, um, and, uh, called my president cabinet and said, come on, bring your Santa Claus suit, be, you're gonna be Santa Claus. He said, yeah, Santa Claus gonna be there. I am there.
So that's all I want to say. Appreciate those updates. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. I believe Counselor Smith, you wanted to acknowledge someone.
I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Johnny Gunn, President of the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association that's here this morning.
Thank you. Appreciate seeing you out in the audience. Thank you. And we do know we have some family members out there too, but we'll say hi.
I'll put her on the spot. My aunt from Cleveland here, is here, uh, Sheila Smith. Shaking her head, there we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to thank our officers on duty, Officer Pinkett, Officer Square. We thank you for your service today. We're always so happy to have you with us. At this time, councilors, that's the end of our agenda. Our entertaining motion, adjourned.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.